Go ahead and call the meeting officially to order and do a roll call vote.
Callers?
Present.
Deacon?
Here.
Hensley?
Lester?
Here.
Mealy?
Present.
Schwartz?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Wiseman?
Present.
Wright?
Present.
With the quorum, we'll go ahead to item three, adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. It takes us to item four and a couple of great opportunities, but first, we're going to be recognizing Mr. Dick Preston. He's retiring after 55 years at KRCG. I think he had a little party last week. I saw a bunch of great pictures, but if you want to come up and more than welcome to make some comments to council and then we'll do a picture and some things, but thanks for being here.
I was back there a few times, but never up here, so.
That's a little different.
Uh, yeah, I started at Channel 13 in January of 1968 and I was thinking, what would I want to tell you? Well, one of the things I used to do was cover city council meetings, but they weren't here. They were up where Cole County Abstract is, up one block up in the corner. And City Hall, of course, was in the, that was on the second floor, so it was a very small little place. And the mayor was John Christie. Uh, he was kind of like everybody's grandpa at that time. Uh, he was, and I think he was in his seventies. He had been Speaker of the House and a long time mayor of Jefferson City. They used to joke about him. Whenever there was a problem, he would appoint a committee because that's what he did over at the Missouri House. So, uh, I don't remember too much about that. One, you know, when you think back about things, a lot of time, well, I do trivia in the morning, that's what I used to do, and this is very trivial. One thing I remember about Mayor Christie was Riley Chevrolet got their new building. That's the one that was destroyed with the tornado a few years ago. And Mayor Christie came over there to preside and he drove up in a brand-new Ford. Very, very trivial, but I've got a lot of good memories and this is a wonderful.
They're giving Dick Preston, uh, heat of the city.
Oh, you got a, you got a voiceover.
Yes.
Well, we're sure proud of the, what you've done and what you've done for our community. Fan since I've been here and you've done a great job out there. Your colleagues obviously love you and have loved working with you. They were very gracious to contact us and I compliment Emily and Cindy. They, they did a lot of work to get this taken care of so we could get it on the agenda, but we wanted to keep it close to your retirement time. Any council members have any comments that you want to make?
I have a question. Whatever happened to Curtis Swen? We loved you.
Curtis?
Uh-huh. Remember him?
Yes, but I don't, I couldn't tell you.
He was good.
Yeah. We've had a few good ones in the time, yeah, yeah. And there are so many of them, they showed, uh, on the new news, they showed a bunch of people paying tribute to me. I had to watch that twice to figure out who all those people were. Thank you very much. It's, it was wonderful covering this community because it's a great community.
Thank you for your service. Well, it's a privilege to give you this. This is the first one I've given out to you.
Okay.
But congratulations. We just want to make a little token to thank you for all your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, council, for working with us and we've got an opportunity for another exciting presentation. Chief Schofield?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll ask Roxy Van Poel to join me up here. And, uh, as she is talking, I'll ask other firefighters to come up too, and maybe I'll give each one of them one of these awards. Roxy can tell us about the different awards.
Okay. Okay. I have a couple of things before I get to the awards I wanted to mention. So I'm a volunteer event director for the Stevens-Siller Tunnel to Towers Foundation. We have a 5K here in Jefferson City on the, usually the first Saturday after 9/11 each year. This year was our eighth year to hold that event and we had about 200 participants, which makes us real excited that that many people want to come out and show their appreciation to our local first responders as well as the memory of those that we lost on 9/11. We are over one, one of over 75 national events and that's something I think Chief Schofield and I are very proud to know that Jefferson City is on the map as having one of those events in, um, in Jefferson City, Missouri. And what we do is we raise money. Um, that's part of our, our agenda for our event in, in addition to honoring the memory of those that we've lost. But, um, what I wanted to do today was tell you just a little bit about the, what the foundation does. We do provide smart homes for catastrophically injured military veterans and that's how the whole, um, foundation kind of started and started raising money. We have two of those in Missouri. We also raise money for fall, the Fallen First Responder Program. And that's a program that helps take care of families when a first responder is killed in the line of duty. That could be, um, a police officer, a firefighter, um, a corrections officer, a conservation agent. Anyone that's serving the community is someone that, whose family could be benefited from this program. And it's generally geared towards families where there are small children involved and helps pay off the mortgages or provide a home for those families. Another thing that we've, um, started doing, um, in the last couple of years is a Gold Star Family Program where one of the spouses in a fa, in a family with small children, once again, has been killed in, in action. And those are Gold Star Families that oftentimes need, um, extra assistance and we do provide mortgage-free homes for those families as well. There's an application process and as I mentioned, writing homes for young children is really a lot, a big part of the goal of the foundation. Last year, we started a program for homeless veterans. We don't have anything like that here in Missouri yet, um, that we're supporting. Not that we don't have homeless veterans, but, um, over 2,500 veterans have been helped so far in 2023 throughout the country by providing, um, apartments and other home services for veterans. So I just wanted to share that with all of you to let you know a little bit more about the foundation. So on to why we're really here tonight, and that is to award to the Jeff City Fire Department, um, two awards. One is for the Fastest Firehouse. I think they, um, achieved winning that award in seven of the eight years that we've had the award. And then also the most participants, Jeff City had the most participants from any department, fire, police, or, um, EMT. So here we are. Um, so we have two of our participants, two of them regretfully, or well, three participants here tonight because Chief, Chief, you participated.
Two of the four run.
So we have Mitch Scoggins, who's here, and he, um, participated. And we also have Travis Milne and both of them participated in the event in full gear. That is one of the criteria, so, um, I know I never probably could have done it, but these young guys can carry that 60-plus pounds of gear and run up and down the hills of Jeff City. So that's something we should all be quite proud of. And then Chief Schofield also ran in the event. Clint Kemker, who's not here tonight, and, um, Alec Ivans also participated in the Fastest Firehouse team and they're not here this evening either, so. So guys, congratulations. Some of you all out next year. Um, don't have our date yet, but it's generally, like I said, the first Saturday after 9/11. One of the things too I wanted to mention and thank Chief Schofield for the last two years in the city is, we are unable to display our signs of the, all the fallen from 9/11, um, at the Capitol due to legislation that was passed in the last couple of years. But we've been able to put the signs up and you might have seen them at the local fire stations. And that's something that we're really proud of, um, to know that the community can drive by and see, um, those signs. And I know one day I was at a store here in town during that week, we put them up the Saturday before the event and a little boy saw my shirt and he said, he asked about it and I told him, he said, oh, I saw signs of those firefighters up at, by his local school. So it says something to the children that their parents can hopefully share the, the history now of that event with them.
Chief, did you want to make any comments?
I'll just make one comment. Uh, we also get a lot of support from different organizations around the community. One of them is the Naval Sea Cadets. They always run the race. They're, they're not at full bunker gear, but they're in their camos and everything. And so they were running with us this year and, uh, I heard one of the leaders of that group tell his, his squadron as they came up behind me because they were getting ready to pass me. He said, stop! Run at 50-year-old man pace. Don't pass the old guy. And so I felt really good about that. We ran together to the finish line, uh, so I officially achieved old guy status this year.
Very nice. Congratulations. Any comments from council? All right, Chief, if you want to orchestrate the front, we'll line up behind and we'll take some pictures and you can have anybody you want to come up.
Okay. Everybody ready? One, two, three.
All right, Al has the blade somewhere.
One, two, three. Thanks.
Again, congratulations, Chief. I don't know, we can't get that smile off your face. You seem real happy sitting in your former spot.
I thought it was that old band status, Chief.
Oh, that.
Mr. Crane does get to go on vacation, right?
Oh, he does not.
Wow. That takes us to item five, public hearings. Sending Bill 2023-046.
In accordance with the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning point four-five acres of land addressed as 211 Commerce Drive from M2 General Industrial to C2 General Commercial.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, what we have here is a second reading for this bill and a public hearing for it as well for a site here at 211 Commerce Drive, also known as Highway 179. Uh, we did hear the first read October 2nd. Um, just a quick look at that site. So it would be a rezoning. Right now, it is zone M2, which is industrial. Uh, as you can see, it borders, uh, directly adjacent to the C2 District, which is a commercial district. Uh, so the use that they're proposing for the site, uh, is for a dry cleaning business that would include a drive-through service. So it's not permitted at M2, but it is permitted in C2. Uh, given that this kind of law exists right on that transition border, uh, we did think it's an appropriate rezoning for this location. C2 area, that corner is mostly a commercial corner, uh, so we think it would be kind of in line with, uh, a lot of the other properties immediately adjacent to it. This is kind of a zoomed-in shot here. Uh, as you can see, it does have a couple of shared axes to the west, um, out to 179 and also to the south on Merchant's Drive. The property that kind of shares those with, um, is a, is a contractor's company. I think it's an HVAC company. Uh, we don't see any particular conflicts necessarily with that use either. One thing, a point to, to note, uh, the Plan and Zoning Commission did hear that request and they voted eight, uh, nothing in favor of the rezoning. We'd be happy to, uh, be happy to answer any questions. Staff is also recommending approval, uh, and we're also recommending to conduct a public hearing.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing then. Is anyone here to speak on this bill? You just identify yourself and welcome. Thanks for being here.
Sure. My name is Brian McMillan with Central Missouri Professional Services and, uh, I'm the consultant for Mr. Nick Shrimp, who's also here this evening. He's the owner of Nick's Road Cleaners and, um, uh, one thing I would like to say, uh, my appreciation for, for city staff to be able to kind of push this project, this rezoning through. It was, uh, Mr. Shrimp's been under the gun to find a new location and, um, and he bought this building without realizing it wasn't zoned appropriately, which I didn't realize it either, just assuming that C2 with Sonic being next door, that that would be what the zoning was. But anyway, uh, we were able to have a special Plan and Zoning Commission meeting and, and we're here. So, uh, we very appreciative of city staff working with us in that regard, so. But anyway, I would be happy to answer any questions, uh, if you have any on the project or, or in relation to the rezoning.
Any questions? Thanks. Anyone else like to speak on this bill? We appreciate your investment in our cities. Thank you very much. All right, I think we'll go ahead and close the public hearing then and we will take up Bill 2023-046. Need a roll call vote.
Callers?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yes.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Your platters.
Great. Good luck. Congratulations and thanks again. All right, that takes us to item six, appointments by the mayor, item A. You'll see one appointment for Parks and Rec's commission, so that is before you right now.
To approve.
Look at that. Got a motion and a second. Any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So the motion passes? Do you want a roll call? All right, we'll do a roll call.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
No.
Mealy?
No.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Callers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Congratulations. That takes us to item seven, presentation from staff consultants and inviting guests. I believe, item A, yard waste update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a second, we'll have a little short presentation here to kind of discuss some options. And while we're doing that, just to kind of recap where we're at, um, we did have an RFP for, uh, retaliation of yard waste services. Three submitted bids weren't accepted by council, uh, and so staff brought together or back, uh, back to council. Three options we would present, uh, and they're kind of based on, uh, two presumptions. One is that council desires to have a kind of short-term gap, uh, service to fill in space before we, uh, then, uh, submit a revised RFP perhaps in the spring, uh, for a longer-term contract. You know, in this case, it could be a five-year contract. During the six months, uh, where we'd have a short-term gap service, uh, we would put together a new RFP. Uh, we've spoken, um, about taking, uh, the RFP process through public works and planning to get, uh, feedback from council about that location, um, and also solicit public input on what kind of priorities and goals we'd like to see going forward with the, with the new contract. So this kind of assumes we're looking for something to fill that gap between November 1st, which is when the existing contract will expire, technically expires end of October 31st, uh, through, uh, April 30th, uh, at which point we would expect to have a new, longer-term RFP contract underway beginning May 1. Uh, so really, uh, we'll go through those three options. Uh, so option one, uh, still, uh, the option does exist to extend the, uh, current contract. We have, uh, all-seasons landscaping, uh, company. There's some benefits to this, of course, it would be least, uh, least disruptive to residents since the location wouldn't be changing, uh, the service wouldn't be changing. Um, that, uh, that item is one that we could discuss in closed session if council chooses to move ahead with option one. Uh, as discussed earlier, we could also have a vote, uh, at this time to open that discussion and have a discussion on the details of the contract, um, during this open session agenda item. So we'll go ahead and I'll do all, uh, three options and I think we can come back then and do, if council does want to explore option one, uh, at that time, we could decide whether or not to go to a closed session with the details of that contract extension potential. So option one's pretty straightforward. Uh, that would be for six months, uh, potentially again through, uh, April 30th. Option two, um, this would be a, uh, opportunity for the city to do a city-owned and operated site. Uh, so essentially what we, uh, staff had discussed is locating a city property, um, where we would open it up for, uh, residents to come and bring their yard waste materials, uh, for a set period of time. Uh, we located two potential locations, one is staff's preferred alternative. Um, this, in the meantime, for the six-month period, could be a slightly less expensive option. All of that, though, is, is caveated with the, uh, with the, uh, notion that a lot of the expense depends on the materials that we collect. Uh, so, uh, just, uh, more a little caution on looking at the expected prices for those. Um, city would have control of the site, though, uh, would provide some, uh, control of, of who is, uh, using the site. Um, staff is proposing some changes to the service, though, to keep, uh, the, the allotment of that service low. Um, one of those would be, uh, cut back time, so we would look at having the site open, um, for a period, um, up to December 17th on weekends only. So there'd be seven weekends from the beginning of November through about the middle of December, uh, 14 days total. So it would be open Saturdays and Sundays from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Uh, during that time, it would be manned by staff, uh, so it would be controlled during the times when it is not. It would be closed, uh, so that individuals could not access it while it was on. So some of the drawbacks of this, uh, at some point in the future, we will have to, um, process that material. By processing, I do mean either grinding up the material, um, but possibly just, uh, dispersing it or distributing it to individuals who would like the, the materials. Um, so that is the next step. We would likely need to do an RFP at some point to be able to remove the materials from the sites at some point, uh, depending on the sites. Specifically, the one that staff's identified is our, is our preferred alternative. It is in use at the park site right now, so we're going to have to remove those materials potentially by, uh, late March. Uh, so again, the drawbacks of that is, is a reduced service, uh, but that does hopefully come with a reduced cost. Um, option number three, and actually we'll look at a couple of those sites real quick. So the two sites that we did identify, um, as the, uh, the first one being the staff's, uh, preferred alternative. So this is at Binder Park. Uh, it is a existing gravel parking lot. Uh, the benefits of this site over some of the other sites we've, uh, located is that it does have a, an existing surface now. We would not have to prepare a surface with any type of material such as gravel. Uh, so use of the site would be, um, easier. Uh, it would also, uh, reduce the amount of cleanup and restoration we'd need for the site. Some other sites we had located is, uh, they are not on improved service, so they would require a little bit more prep and then cleanup as well. Going through this process, though, staff is aware that location is an important factor. Uh, so we did want to come up with an alternative, knowing that this site is west of town. Uh, the other alternative that we had, uh, is a location, um, south, a little southeast of the roundabout located at Ellis Boulevard and Tanner Bridge Road. So this is city-owned property, uh, required previously, uh, when we were doing work on the roundabout. Um, it is a little smaller than the other location. Uh, it would require, uh, some site prep. Uh, we would likely need to put in an entrance off the roundabout on the south, as shown on the graphic on the screen. Uh, but we would be able to bring, uh, vehicles in and then exit them, uh, on the site there on an entrance that's a little further down. Uh, so this would be, uh, the alternative if Binder Park was not preferred by council. Uh, again, this would be manned by staff and would be controlled, uh, so that access to the site would not be allowed during long hours. Uh, so those are the two sites, uh, that city has, uh, and staff has identified as potential locations. We did look at other sites, um, and these were the ones that we felt had the, kind of the best characteristics that might make it a good site for temporary, uh, six-month type of yard waste collection site. Uh, the third option, uh, which would be a little more difficult to put together, would basically be, uh, to do a very quick and short-term RFP. Uh, essentially, we'll be taking services we're getting right now and putting that into a, a much more condensed package. So we'd be sending something out as quick as possible. Um, we would probably, though, revise that RFP, uh, to make it look a little more like, um, a city-managed site. So it would be reduced hours, um, so we could, uh, reduce costs for that site. Um, some of the limitations for that, though, is that there are very few sites, um, I shouldn't say very few sites, but there is limited property within the city that is zoned correctly, uh, to be identified as a compost site immediately. Uh, it has to be zone M2, so that is industrial. Uh, most of those properties are located along Industrial Drive. Uh, so it would be, um, a little more difficult to be able to identify a property in, in short order and get it prepared for a compost site, but it's something, though, that would not be a hindrance to property that would be located in the county. Uh, zoning would not be an issue there, so if we did do an RFP, just potentially, we could get, um, property owners with sites that are located in the county, um, submitting bids for that. It would be a very quick turnaround, but we think it is, there is a, a path forward to have this back in front of council on November 6th, if that's an option they so choose. Uh, I can't guarantee that, given some of the complications with that, but we would look to put out an RFP within the week, uh, and have it posted for the, the minimum two weeks and then have something awarded and, and back to council if that's the, the option that they choose to go with. Uh, so that would be option three. The downside of that is it is a fair amount of uncertainty there, as we don't know who would actually submit bids for that. Uh, so we can't guarantee that if we go through that, we would get, uh, any appropriate bids, uh, for that. Could wind up, uh, in a situation where we don't have service, uh, beginning November 1. Those are the three options that staff put together for consideration. Uh, again, if council would like to, uh, go with option number one, uh, the details of a contract extension could be discussed in a closed session if you so choose. If staff would like to go, or excuse me, if council would like to go with option two, we have, uh, two options there. Again, staff's preferred alternative would be Binder Park with a backup, um, at Ellis Boulevard. So we'd be happy to answer any questions, um, and we're looking for direction from council.
Councilman Deacon?
Chief, uh, thanks for the work, Lynn. Uh, yeah, it was very informative. If you look at the cost to open up the, uh, Tanner Bridge site, what kind of cost are you looking at?
Uh, yeah, we spoke with, with, uh, Public Works. Uh, they thought it was fairly minimal cost.
Yeah, we could do the work ourselves, essentially with our equipment and, uh, clear the site, put some rock down, things like that. Minimal cost because we own the equipment, half-time. There's a cost there, but it's costs we're paying already.
My, my feeling is, uh, Miller Lake would be, uh, probably as bad or worse than the bridge. I mean, we have a lot of people that don't want to go that far. I'm not comfortable extending the, the contract with the, the present contractor for a variety of reasons. I would like the city, uh, I like the idea of the, the Tanner Bridge, it's for no other reason. We can get a handle on what's really coming in there. We've not been able to get any numbers whatsoever from the previous contractor, how much the city is putting in, putting in and, um, we can see how, how big, how much use is and, uh, leaves, grass and, and bundled limbs. I mean, that's not hard to deal with. We can take the bundled limbs across the river and have him chew it up if we have to. We can contract that out and the leaves will, you can chew those up and they're... We really should get a concerted effort to tell people to chew up those leaves when they're, when they're dry. There's so many nutrients in there. Same with your grass clippings. Leave them fly. What they take out of the, the ground, those nutrients are locked up in there. Kind of often enough, you know, the most beautiful lawn there is, and people can tell you, oh, the leaves are too thick. We've cut cemeteries where you couldn't see the moor anymore. As long as they're dry, you shatter them, close up your chute, shatter them, then you leave little windrows in the gull room. Spread those windrows, you have the most beautiful lawn you ever had. It's, um, it's really counterproductive to rake them. But we could do that, tell the people that it's, it's silly to rake your leaves, silly to catch your grass clippings. Unless it's zoned, yeah, that's another story. But, um, then we can have a handle on what, what we're really making in and, uh, if it's worth the spin, seventeen thousand a month to have somebody else do it, or more than that. He doesn't want that much. Wants more.
I, I appreciate it. I'll just, I'll just jump in real quick saying we, we'll touch on that a little bit after this discussion on a little bit of our public information campaign we're going to put out, so I just want to say that.
Councilman Spencer? I'm sorry, were you done, Councilman?
I was, um, I'll, I was going to make a motion, but no, let other people speak.
Councilman Spencer?
Well, I'm, I'm not comfortable with asking any questions on, on option one, but do you have a couple of questions on option two, three? Um, with, is, has staff given any thought of having both of those locations, uh, city, city options open and maybe alternate days a week, or far west end of Binder be open certain days a week? And then having Tanner Bridge be open certain days a week, giving options of, of locations to, to citizens? And then number three, I guess another question I have is the zoning requirement of, of, uh, this type of, of, um, industrial use. I understand we, we can't fast-track, um, zoning issues, but is there an option that we could reclassify a mulching operation under a different use?
So we, as a, as a former firefighter, there's, there is some hazard there, but it's...
So as a former firefighter, there is some hazard there, but it's going to be in an open, it's not going to be confined in a building. So I think it'd somewhat be contained, and I just feel like there's, we should look at alternatives there if that is an option.
Yeah, and I spent some time going over that with my planning manager to look at if there was any other alternatives as far as classifying that use. Really, the big hiccup there was that there really isn't anything that would allow outdoor storage of any materials in the commercial district. So it really kind of tied our hands as far as kind of classifying it as something besides a compost use. We have a specific compost permitted use, so to be something different than that, it would have to have been something similar that's in commercial that didn't have that outdoor storage component. We couldn't really find anything that would allow that, unfortunately. It would have been, it would have been, kind of opened up a lot more opportunities for those sites. But I will say that if we go to that longer-term stretch, the C2 district, talking about the long-term RFP, does allow compost uses with a special exemption program, right? And that's something that would have to come to council for approval. So we think there'll be time for a owner that has that type of zoning, also M1 zoning, when we're going through the longer-term RFP process, they'd have time to go through a rezoning in conjunction with their RFP. So we kind of have a rough idea of timelines where they could actually kind of go together at the same time.
So the authority having jurisdiction, which is the city of Jefferson, we do not have any levers to pull to be able to change that use?
No, the process is essentially the same, whether or not you're rezoning or you're doing a reclassifying the use into a zone. The process is the same, by law, and there's a required amount of public participation, that's what it is.
Thank you. Thanks.
Councilman Wiseman.
So is either an option to move sites, I'm thinking we need to secure access to them, I guess with gates, is that what you're envisioning?
Yeah, and I think Public Works has some barricades I think we would use. I know the Binder Park site has a drive, it fence on the other, each side, so they would be fairly easy to kind of control that site, but the Ellis site, we could do that as well.
Yeah, and we would use some gating and just temporary type stuff. As far as hours, I would, I think I'm still, you know, we were hopeful that this could be very truncated hours on the weekends, so we could get, we would like to put people on overtime to do this, so it wouldn't affect our current workloads of things we are doing. If we open it during the week, during work hours, or something like that, then we're not fixing streets, or stormwater, or something else with the same people, if Public Works is demanding, assuming that happens. So the goal was not to do that, to affect our current work, but to get folks an opportunity, maybe, you know, four hours of overtime. Hopefully, we'll get volunteers to do that on occasion, and in a short time, I think we can come up with folks to do that.
I like option two, and I guess for convenience, probably Tanner Bridge would be better.
Councilman Allers, then Councilman Mealy.
Do the, excuse me, do the hours, does that include working Sundays? And what's the hours of operation there? Have you decided what those are going to be? For the businesses, Jeff City, that do lawn care service and all that, is this going to, I think Mr. Shepherdley says it's open until 7:00 p.m., if I remember right. Is that going to include with what the city does there? Because, you know, how many guys are cutting grass, you know, all through the summer, all that, does that give them the option to drop off there, too, at 7:00 p.m.?
So just to be clear, the service we're proposing for option two would only be open to city residents. So we would cease receiving materials from any type of contractors or county residents, which they can currently go to all seasons right now, but all seasons per our contract can charge a fee. So we, our proposal here is to kind of eliminate some of those extra services to reduce the costs and to reduce kind of the burden, I think, on that site. So it would only be open to city residents and their personal yard waste that they're creating from their sites.
The contract has never been available for commercial services.
I didn't know where the lawn care people...
Yeah, it was only for personal residential drop-off. Commercial folks were not supposed to be able to use that on a free...
I had that conversation with Chris, I'm just kind of remembering that aspect coming up there.
And our current proposal right now would be 8:00 a.m. to noon, Saturday and Sunday. So we feel like that would be kind of the peak times, and also not so long that we would struggle to get staff to fill those spaces.
That cost you projected at $7,000.
Yeah, we roughly thought probably about $1,000 a weekend, less than $1,000 for staff time. Seven weekends.
Mealy?
I really like the idea of this city brand option, because I, again, I agree with the colleagues that we don't really know what the numbers are, and I think that'll afford us an opportunity to see what six months of numbers are. Now, I know we're getting into a slower time after November, especially the holidays hit up until March, so that's why I would be absolutely opposed to other options. But just because of that, you know, there's not going to be that many people using it. And I think, I looked at your estimates, I think they're reasonable estimates. How many folks do you think would be out there staffed?
Well, we were anticipating two to begin with. And we'll have to see how it goes. It's kind of, you know, a little bit uncharted territory, so I think safely to say we probably continue with two, but if for some reason it really drops off towards the end, we might be able to do one. But I think two for safety as well might be a good idea.
I was going to make a motion, if anybody else has any other comment after that, but I'd like to make a motion that we move with the city option at Tanner Bridge for a yard waste site from November 1, 23 to March 31, 24, with those eight to 12 hours of service Saturday and Sunday, GR-funded. And in that timeframe, that gives you six months that a new RFP be distributed, and with that RFP, I would request that, within that time, I would request that a public hearing be held, a council chambers, one here, to seek public engagement on the process, and then just ask that staff take those public comments and concerns into reasonable consideration.
I think we got a lot stacked into a motion. We may have to do it in a couple of, maybe...
I got it all here, so I could...
You proceed, and then if council decides to proceed, then you may want to just, and I think you could just direct staff to do the second part of our request. Mr. Crane?
Yeah, I think we can work on the details of that. But one thing I wanted to clarify, we just had through December, he was talking March.
Right, and I think, just to clarify, yeah, so we would, option two would still be a proposal for seven weekends. Cease receiving materials middle of December, with the expectation that basically from November 1 to May 1, we'd be working on a long-term RFP contract. So there would be a amount of time there from mid-December to probably April, where we would not be receiving any type of yard waste. So individuals and residents would have to hold on to the materials until we have something in place starting May 1.
So do you think two point whatever amount of months is going to be a reasonable amount of time for your team to assemble an RFP, have a public hearing, minimum one public hearing, get feedback, get that out circulated, and present to council a staff recommendation?
Repeat the first part of that, how long?
So two, it would be between now and December 31st, right?
Yep, so our proposal is to have a new RFP that would have a new contract in place May 1. So that's the six-month period. So we'd have a six-month period where we're working on a long-term RFP.
So if I may, so we'll have a few months of no service at all?
Is that right?
From January till the end of December.
Gotcha.
All right, do you want to restate your motion, then? We've got two different dates. You can leave the date in there that you're asking for, but that's different than what staff proposed.
Yeah, I can restate the motion. I'm trying to figure out here if there's a solution to a January through April gap in service. I didn't realize that was...
Let's let Councilman Allers make his comment, if you want to work on your motion.
If I second that, motion is open for discussion.
Oh, we don't have a motion yet.
Oh, Christmas trees, people dropping that off in January, anybody think of that? What do we do with that? Can we, maybe he can figure out, go, if it's viable for your motion, that I just think about where people are...
We could work, we could come up with an option to include a time period for that, too. I mean, it's kind of, you know, in discussion right now, what's on the table right now is what the options that we prepare. Council would like us to explore, or direct us to go ahead and open that up for additional weekends.
Could you elaborate just as to why you wanted to shut down at the end of December? Is it just a use of service thing?
Yeah, we thought that would be easier to actually get staff to man that site if it wasn't extended beyond those seven weekends, to control costs, but also because the amount of yard waste, based on the records we've got, drops down considerably after December. So I think in 2022, we had 6,000 cubic yards in November, and then about 500 in December. So there's a significant drop from December, or from November to December. Doesn't mean it's zero, so there still could be yard waste that individuals would want to come, but again, under this proposal, service would end in December 17.
And if I could make a suggestion, if we get to, you know, March 1st, and the city council says, hey, we need to open this up for another six weeks as a gap until we get a more long-term solution in place, I think that's reasonable. But I don't think that's necessarily something that needs to be decided tonight, is, I think that's something that, I guess, see how this goes, if it's viable, if we think we need a solution until we get the permanent contract in place, then that could be a stopgap until we get the full...
Right, so council, your suggestion is, you know, we can see how this goes and extend it if necessary.
Yeah. And the Ellis site makes that a little more feasible, because it's not a park location. We need to have it cleaned out by a certain date, so it could stay there a little bit.
Councilman Wiseman, then Councilman Deacon.
So the only thing that I can think about during the winter might be if we had an ice storm and a tree came down, is there a possibility for like a call for service after some sort of ice storm or something?
You know, typically, on any storm, if we have a big storm of some kind, we've had to open up other sites in the past, so we'll just be flexible on that, to see what the magnitude is. Occasionally, we have a tree here or there that we, staff may pick up out of the roadway, but if a large storm does come through, we had to rent sites and do all kinds of things to accommodate that. So I think, you know, what we, Clint and I talked about, it gives a lot of flexibility when things come up, what they are, you know, staff them as we can see at that time.
So with that, I'd like to move to approve the Ellis site. That's the end of my motion.
All right, we got a motion. Got a second? Does that meet the needs of what you were going for?
Well, I'm trying to figure out where my motion went.
There was no second to it, so...
We'd been asked for a second at that time.
Yeah, you wanted to explain...
There was more discussion.
He offered a motion, I think we have to act on his first, correct?
There was no second to the motion.
And I think it's very similar to Councilman Wiseman's motion.
That's why I was asking.
I just wanted to make sure as part of this motion, we have in their direction that city staff hold at minimum one public hearing for public comment, feedback, and then freeze.
Mr. Crane indicated that they would take that feedback and work with Mr. Smith, so it doesn't technically need to be a part of the motion, if you want to make a second motion after we can, but I think they...
But if you all would just hold a public hearing, I think it would be appropriate that it's...
We've got a motion and a second. Councilman Spencer?
To echo a little bit of Councilman Mealy, I think there was a lot of willingness of citizens' participation to participate in RFP process, so I'd like to keep that open as much as possible, but there's no need to put in a motion for detail or anything like that. Secondly, though, I assume that this site would be open weather permitting. We've got snow flying, we've got rain, there's no need to have staff there. The likelihood of anybody probably being moved off would be, but if that's the case, I would like to consider for staff that sign up to volunteer for that detail, that they get a minimum of a callback, because they gave up their weekend to possibly work that, and if they can't control the weather, so at least they have a, you know...
Yeah, those are all things we'll take into account that we normally do, something like this, because it is essentially a call-in situation, volunteer and voluntold sometimes, but...
Like I said, I mean...
Not to get a second one, but we have people on call that could work this, and that applies the minimum callback.
We just need to make sure we communicate that, weather permitting piece.
Yeah, and we, you know, we'll have trucks that shelter in, out of place, you know.
Councilman Schwartz?
Did somebody say that the parks take Christmas trees? Did somebody say that, or is that where somebody just...
We haven't, yeah, we have in the past. Drop-off, spin-down, and Vivian.
It's been a while.
Yeah, it has been a while.
I just want to, I want to do a substitute motion that has that open till January 1st, and beyond that, anybody that wants to keep their tree up longer can take it to the park.
Do you want to amend the motion?
Yeah, amend the, not substitute it, amend the motion.
From the December date to January?
January 1st.
Does that just include a holiday, though? Seven out of there.
I think it closes the 12th or so. What day in December did it close?
December 17th, so that'd be the Sunday prior to the Christmas weekend.
So you get the whole week after Christmas to tear down your Christmas tree and take it to this location.
I'd second that.
We've got motion to amend the motion, we've got a second. Any other comments on the amendment?
Neither.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, you got the amended motion in front of you. Any additional comments on the amended motion? Everybody comfortable where we're at?
Clarify, so December 31st is a Sunday, so the motion was to keep it open through January?
Yeah, it'd be the 31st.
Sunday, December 31st.
Be open on New Year's Eve, or if you want to say...
It may be difficult to get, we could do the, instead of that weekend, we could do the next, January 6th and 7th weekend, instead of the...
It's a holiday weekend. Councilman Deacon?
I just want to thank staff for your work on this, and kind of going outside of the box there to get citizens some options, so thank you.
Appreciate it. It was a very joint effort by lots of staff, so we appreciate that.
So the amended motion is to have, to approve the Ellis location from November 1 to January 7th? Yes, I accept that.
With the Christmas tree drop-off?
Up to January 1st.
Up until January 1st.
Thanksgiving, it's okay.
All right, Claire Smith?
Clear.
All right, Rock Over?
Tinsley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right. Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I just want to point out one thing, I won't take too much time, so just kind of come back to what Councilman Deacon had said about a little bit of public information and kind of a public outreach campaign about some options of addressing your yard waste, tired of digging the site. So we'll be putting out some flyers, along with fire department, as well as put together some information for, I mean, burn season, to kind of make this maybe an ongoing public campaign, public awareness campaign for some of the options for residents to dispose of that, and also to do it in a safe manner. So might be seeing these on our social media, we can go down to our sites as well.
I have a comment on that, Mr. Mayor.
Along those same lines, I, you know, I think it would be important to push that message out, you know, to more than just social media. I mean, I know it costs money, but I mean, I think probably we should, you know, take out an ad in the newspaper because this, this is a major change from, you know, one site to the other or whatever. You know, I know there were advertisements, you know, in the past when, you know, the site was possibly closing and that kind of thing, you know, there were ads in the papers. For people that do read the paper, I mean, uh, you know, that's certainly one of our medias, uh, here in town. I think it would be important to also, you know, at least have one or two ads in, in the paper notifying people of that.
Very good, I think we'll have discussions tomorrow, uh, first thing about what, what steps we need to take to make sure we're getting the message out for the new location as fast as possible. So we'll update the website of the yard waste website tomorrow, so that's up to date. And then we'll look at some other options for getting it pushed out to the.
All right, takes us to item eight, announcements by mayor, council staff, committees, administration committees.
Our next meeting is not scheduled until November 1st.
All right, finance.
Our next meeting is scheduled to take place this Thursday morning, uh, October 19th at 7:30 a.m. across the hall.
Public safety.
Our next meeting was supposed to be October 26th, but it's been canceled. And our next meeting will be November 30th at 7:30 in the police training room.
Our next meeting will be November 9th at 7:30 here in the council chambers.
All right, I said, three items I was gonna bring up to date real quick. Last Friday, had the opportunity to attend the Special Olympics, their opening ceremonies. We appreciate them bringing those games to our community, threw a lot of fun by the athletes, little pool that evening, but I think it was a great weekend, great weather. And we appreciate all this Special Olympics does for the athletes and certainly a, a boost for our community. Second, the high school football mayor's cup was won this year by Elias High School, so we congratulate them. We appreciate that competition between our three high schools and I got a chance to see a couple of the games and it, it was a great opportunity. And then last, I would say Lincoln Homecoming was recent and again, another great weekend parade.
Sorry, this was a bunch of that, but Chief Schofield, is he gone or is he here? The game between Jeff City and Cap City was won by Jeff City.
I can't verify that.
Sure we'll see you again in districts.
Anyways, we, we appreciate everybody that participated in, in Lincoln's Homecoming and a great week for our community. Anything else that we need to, Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I just would like to thank, uh, our police department, uh, especially Officer Heckemeyer. Uh, I know he's in charge of our, uh, neighborhood watch program and he came and did a, uh, a program for the 1,000 block of Boonville Road. And, uh, it's very informative and I really appreciate it and the citizens just, just really appreciated him taking the time on a Sunday to come and, and speak to, uh, concerned citizens, so if you could pass that along.
Pass it along, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess just to tag in on that with the police department, I think drug takeback day is a week from Saturday.
Yeah.
We're partnering with Council for Drug-Free Youth and the arson city police department, so.
And at the line, proceed right around the same time, so.
We appreciate your work on that effort, uh, when you get unused drugs off, off of the streets and out of medicine cabinets. So appreciate Council for Drug-Free Youth and working with that. With that, we'll move to presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions.
I didn't have anyone signed up for a specific bill or resolution. Is that not accurate? Just in general, I have people signed up, so they'll speak later in the agenda.
All right, takes us to item 10, consent agenda.
I move to agree.
You got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, item 11, bills introduced 2023 dash 048.
An ordinance amending chapter 29 sewers and sewage disposal of the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by adding definitions and adding maintenance of public sewers.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah, this is in a tip, just to beat up our code, uh, clarifying that, uh, city sewers are maintained by, by our sewer department and that, uh, our, our contractor working in, in them, they should contact.
Any questions? I'm sorry?
Signed up for something that did be.
It's still coming up.
It, it's coming up. Couple more items. Okay, item 2023, the bill 2023 dash 049.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Wellworks for wellness program services.
Let's go.
Thank you. Uh, the city bid wellness services with the assistance of Wallsh, Wall Street Insurance. We had an initial committee of employees and personnel from Wall Street who had been with four of the companies that submitted bids and then brought the top two proposals to a second committee of employees. Select a wellness, it's the best choice to provide wellness services for the employees of the city. Wellness programs encourage healthy lifestyles and healthier employee, healthier employees tend to be more productive and take fewer sick days, resulting in reduced healthcare costs and increased operational efficiency. Some of the benefits of Wellworks include they have a robust online incentive and learning portal to assist employees in improving and maintaining a healthy lifestyle. They allow employees to have their doctor's permit results of biometric screenings, reducing the cost to the city and also saving time for employees. Their website is automated and technologically driven to allow members to upload proven documents, position statements, activity verifications and other materials without any additional cost, instead of the city having to manually upload or enter the information or send it to a third party. They have a diverse financial component and a comprehensive walking program. They have the electronic tracking, syncing capabilities and they do offer good savings over our current provider. The city's been offering a wellness program for about 10 years and the cost is included in the budget for fiscal year 24. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And Randy Lucanotti with Wall Street is also here tonight, in case you have any questions for him.
Any questions, Councilman Wiseman?
Mayor, I know I didn't brief this in pre-meeting, but I would move to suspend the rules and have his second read.
All right, standing, no objection.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Wellworks for wellness program services.
You have 2023 dash 049 in front of you, any other discussion? Call book.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
All passes.
All right, takes us to bills pending, 2023 dash 046, we've already taken up 2023 dash 047.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the personnel policy manual, article 12, vacation leave, section 12 dash 1 and section 12 dash 2 and article 13, sick leave, section 13 dash 1.
Let's go, back to you.
Thank you. So this ordinance, um, as the clerk said, updates the vacation and sick leave sections of the personal policy manual. So during the I A F F contract negotiations, this included an increase to the vacation and sick leave accruals for those employees who are covered by the N Y U. This ordinance extends the benefits to the rest of the city employees by increasing the vacation accruals and the vacation caps and the sick leave accruals. The program was discussed during the, um, budget process and this ordinance, um, coincides with the budget process. The Austin Peters study conducted in 2016 recommended we improve the vacation and sick leave policies to better compare to our peers. The proposed enhancements will assist in recruitment and retention during this very difficult hiring climate and will ensure all employees are receiving the same benefits. There is a chart included with the bill summary that kind of outlines the increases. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Councilman Hensley?
Thank you, I don't, I don't have a question, I just wanted to bring up again a topic we discussed last meeting and that we've discussed in other prior meetings, just on, um, the percentage payout at, uh, departure from employment here. There, there still will be a difference, um, between the, the covered firefighter contract and, and the rest of its staff uh, regarding percentage of accrued sick leave that's paid out when they depart. I understand the reasons that for the immediate future, that was not addressed and that, and that, and that difference was not covered. So I, I see this as, as a positive incremental step, uh, but I think it really deserves to be a priority in the coming year, coming years, uh, that we find a way to address that difference and really strive for and achieve parity, um, across the board with respect to this, um, to this benefit for, uh, for all city staff. So I appreciate the work on this and, and there's, there's still more to happen, thank you.
Councilman Spencer?
I concur with my colleague, Councilman Hensley, uh, you know, I really appreciate, uh, the local 671 and F O P really leading the effort in improving benefits that really ultimately always trickles down to the rest of, of the employee groups here in the city. And I, even like you said, I think it's an incremental step and, uh, we hope that they eventually get there, so.
Councilman Allen?
And I, I want to thank, uh, Councilman Hensley for bringing that up, too. It was something I would like to maybe bring up at the finance meeting and how, who we could look at it with, in your best opinion, when we could revisit they, uh, that, because I, I've heard from a couple people, it was something they would be, they would like for the city council to look at, uh, in the very near future. And I think it's worth us, uh, looking back that we made the first step in the, uh, increased sick leave and the, uh, vacation schedule, so. I look forward to those, uh, conversations and what you think a good timeline would be from, of your position on that. You know, what other things we can open up. Again, thanks to the, the police and the fire department for setting the, uh, stage, getting going on this, so we can bring everybody up and it keeps retention, uh, something that, uh, we're probably going to have to address with, you know, sooner or later with everything. So I think this might be a great step into helping the retention problem we have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we got 2023 dash 047 before you, we'll do a roll call vote.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
All passes.
All right, that takes us to item 13, informal calendar, 2023 dash 40.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting a budget and personnel classification plan for the city for the period of November 1, 2023, to October 31, 2024 and appropriating money in the city treasury to pay the cost of operating the city government during that period in accordance with the budget.
Councilman Hensley?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to bring this off the informal calendar and set it before the council for consideration. Uh, and I, I would ask, uh, that Ms. Perry be recognized to address, uh, sort of the, the, the cleanup that went into, um, a substitute bill that is on the agenda and that I'll address further after she has a chance to make some comments.
Are you putting the substitute on the, 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 Ms. Perry?
So the substitute bill incorporates all of the modification and modifications approved on the parking lot by the budget committee during the previously held budget meetings. And everything that is included in the total overall budget of 82,467, 82,467,801 dollars uh, would come straight from that parking lot that we had previously worked with. This would include the addition of 253,200 dollars that was added to the parking fund for transfer to the general fund. And then within the general fund, those, uh, those funds were allocated, um, specifically, uh, I believe by Councilman Schwartz. We also then would increase the total overall budget number for those funds that are coming into the general fund from the parking fund. I want to point out, it seems like this would be, uh, kind of double counting the same number. But what we are doing with that overall budget is we're recognizing total expenditures throughout the city. So the 253,000 dollars would have increased the parking expenditures and then once it came into the general fund and we allocated it, uh, as part of the budget, it would also then increase the general fund expenditures by the same 253,000 dollars. So there seems to have been some confusion about that with some comments I've received over the last several days. So I just want to point out that it is overall expenditures and that means within every fund. Additionally, there was 2 million dollars that was added for parks, for capital projects that were not included in the mayor's original budget, but were brought forward by the parks department and had been approved by the parks commission. There was an additional 302,891 dollars added to the parks budget for, uh, administrative chargebacks to bring them to 100% of their chargeback amount. In turn, that 302,891,000 dollars was also then added to the general fund because council did appropriate that, um, within the general fund for various expenditures. And then there was also an additional 70,708 dollars, uh, added to the general fund due to a Scribner's error that occurred between the police department and the S R O department. Once those things were taken into account, we had 708 dollars and 83 cents that was not spent. So it will roll to the fund balance and that makes up the variance of the 3,182,182 dollars uh, that is included between the original bill introduced and the substitution that was introduced, introduced across total overall budget. Some of those things affected the general fund, so on the substitute bill, the general fund is also different between original and substitute bill. But again, those things that came up, um, were the Scribner's error, the parks increase in administrative chargebacks that came into the general fund. There was money that came in, the 253,000 dollars from the parking fund and the 708 dollars that was left unspent.
Councilman, you have any comments?
I'll leave it to the rest of my colleagues if they have any questions before I speak.
Any comments, Perry's presentation?
I, I appreciate very much, uh, that explanation, Ms. Perry, uh, and also Mr. Mayor for allowing that explanation to occur before, um, the substitute is, is drawn forward. I just thought it was important that that explanation come before we vote on anything related to the substitute. So I would move at this time that the council accept the substitute, uh, for this guy.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, do a roll call vote. You're voting to put the substitute on the table.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Now have the substitute before you, Councilman Hensley?
Thank you very much, uh, I'd move to approve the bill of substituted.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve any other discussion on substitute budget bill. Councilman Hensley?
Well, go ahead, Councilman Lester.
Councilman Lester?
So I, I just wanted to thank, uh, the chair, John Henson, for, for the city staff, for our labor-run, uh, uh, budget process. And I appreciate the additional information in this budget, uh, clarifying basis for some of the provisions and the changes in amounts. I'll vote for the budget, obviously, but, but in saying this budget, I believe the council has departed from past practice in ways that are concerning. In an era of declining public trust in government and some of our actions incorporated as public dollar commitments through this budget, I believe further on undermine that trust. The first area of concern is our decision to allocate expenditures from parking fund to purchase police cars. My knowledge, uh, use of enterprise funds other than for enterprise activities have never been done. Purpose and structure of enterprise funds is to allow services, you know, to fund the operation of those services. If they're self-contained type business, uh, taking those dollars to fund other city needs, uh, illegal, in my opinion, is not. legally, in my opinion, is not appropriate and shouldn't be repeated. There's not an argument against purchasing police cars. We had other revenue sources we could have used to accomplish that objective. And also there was the proposal to strip the Parks Commission. A previous council agreed upon voter-approved ten percent portion of capital infrastructure benefits funds. Late in the process, after public outcry against that, that proposal was removed from consideration. However, the effort itself showed disregard for the expressed will of the citizens to adequately fund park improvements. Do you think we need in our budget process to take those type of things into consideration and add to further distrust of government operations?
Councilman Hensley, did you have it?
Anybody else have comments?
Any other Councilman sponsor?
Lester, I disagree with the majority of your comments tonight, but I'd like to thank my colleague, Councilman Schwartz, for coming up with an innovative way for funding police cars.
Other comments on the substitute?
Councilman Hensley? Thank you very much. I would just like to thank and compliment the city staff, particularly Ms. Perry and her team and former interim city administrator, Chief Schofield, who's now almost not even in the room anymore. It was an incredible amount of effort and work and leadership that went in this year as in every year and just really appreciate all their efforts. And thank my colleagues for a lot of hard work over several weeks in our budget meetings and to the mayor for presenting us a very strong mayor's proposal budget to start our work with. So thanks to everyone.
All right, you have the bill before you. Do a roll call vote.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right, that takes us to item B twenty twenty-three dash zero four five.
In order to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing a contract and self-improvement appropriation amending the FY twenty twenty-three budget by transferring funds within the general fund.
Councilman Hensley?
I will leave this on the informal.
All right. Item fourteen A, Resolutions, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven.
A resolution authorizing the Jefferson City Fire Department to enter into a grant consulting agreement with Firehouse Grants LLC.
Chief Schofield?
Yes, thank you. This is a resolution that would allow us to apply for an annual AFP grant, which we've done before, and I'll remind the council that those are very competitive grants. We fare pretty well compared to our peers, but they are increasingly more and more competitive. There's also a very short timeline when the grant is announced annually for us to make that application. So this year, for the first time, we are proposing to enter into a regional grant with our four partner fire districts within Cole County.
So that includes Russell, the Loman, the OSH Fire Protection District, the Cole County Fire Protection District, the Regional West Fire Protection District.
And the idea is that by doing this as a regional grant, you're more likely to score more points compared to our peers and edge out some of the competition to hopefully be successful. The grant can be up to a million dollars that would be split five ways equally amongst the client agencies that would be applying for that grant. So this is a little bit of a unique situation. We are exploring this as an option in the future. We feel like there's a lot of advantages to doing this. In addition to what we've already talked about, having similar equipment, similar accessories that can be programmed with the same software also gives us a really big advantage countywide to communication radio equipment that we are proposing to apply to. So happy to answer any questions. This did come before the Public Safety Committee. We had a discussion there and they supported bringing it to all of you.
I'm answering questions. Councilman Neely?
Chief, I just really appreciate the information and look forward to you and your other partner agencies getting this grant.
You have action on this resolution?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Spicer?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, that takes us to Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
A resolution authorizing Anthem and Gerber Nationwide to provide group health insurance.
Mister?
Thank you. We meet here with the assistance of Wall Street Insurance. Staff reviews our group health insurance plan options. Wall Street did an extensive review this year and recommends we renew our current self-insured plan with Anthem and switch to Gerber Nationwide for our reinsurance portion. The health insurance plan includes three options for employees to choose between varying premiums and cost share benefits. Anthem's administrative services fee will be mostly offset with a pharmacy rebate credit, which is consistent with our current policy. The rates with Gerber Nationwide currently offer a savings of between three hundred and twenty-five thousand and three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year. However, the rates in the specific deductible may change depending on the final rates received from Gerber Nationwide, which we expect within a couple of weeks. Funding in the mayor's approved FY twenty-four budget includes an increase of ten percent over fiscal year twenty-three. Increased health insurance premiums and the savings on the fixed costs within the reinsurance will help to cover anticipated unfunded claims costs. Due to the number of high claims, there is currently no surplus in the self-insurance fund, which is typically used to stabilize the rates from year to year. This fund and/or supplemental appropriation may be needed to pay claims depending upon the actual claims cost in twenty-four. Randy Lucanotti with Wall Street is here this evening and I'd like to invite him to the podium to talk about the current market, kind of the difficult timing and what they've done to help us with our ongoing health insurance challenge.
Mr. Lucanotti, welcome. You just identify yourself, sir.
Randy Lucanotti, CEO of Wall Street Group in Jefferson, Missouri. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff leadership, and happy to address any questions. But just expand on what Gail talked about, and we were here a few weeks ago visiting a pretty extensive review of the marketplace. So again, I'll hit this high level for most employers. You're either fully insured. Typically, we see smaller employers fully insured where you're with one of the carriers. And in today's world, we're down to just a few carriers. Blue Cross, United, Signon, Aetna are the primary carriers. We did look at all those carriers. I think with the information provided, there was no one that offered a competitive proposal. The city definitely is large enough to finance their program and what we call partial self-funding, which the city's done for a number of years. With that, you do buy reinsurance over a specific deductible amount of any covered member, including employees, dependents. Currently, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So you're buying reinsurance to cover high claims once they exceed that. And the proposal really is to change the current carrier, Sun Life, to Gerber Nationwide due to the savings that we're seeing offered. There's some more underwriting to finalize with that through the month of September and we're working through that now, but that would be our recommendation. That is behind the scenes. So when you think about it from an employee or member standpoint, they're covered with Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield. As far as the administrator, that's what the card they have, of course, for the medical and the pharmacy. And the reinsurance release behind the scenes, but significantly important to cover high-costing claimants as we incur those for the employees or dependents. With that, I'll may stop to see if there's any initial questions or if I can expand on anything. Yes?
So with the current, well, in Jefferson City, JCMG and Anthem are currently trying to work things out. Are you working on that? Because we have, I'm sure, a significant amount of people with JCMG and no one else is competitive, then we need to see what we can do to work on that.
Right. Thank you for that question. If you're not familiar, and I was on the phone last Friday with the president of Anthem, also they are working with JCMG. I'm going to talk about this in general. We're not party to their contract. Their contract negotiations are private, if you will. But what JCMG, they're asking for a change in the contract, what they're paid from Anthem, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I don't know any of those details. And that's where the stalemate is, if you will, right now between the provider, JCMG, and they're contracting with Anthem. Just to segue from that for a second, I'll come back to it. We had the similar thing going on earlier this year with Aetna and Boone Hospital System, where they got to a change in their agreement, was stalemated for a while. Boone was out of that contract for a while, but came back in in June of this year. So it's something that is out of a broker's control, if you will, the employer's control, and obviously your covered members, the negotiations between a provider, be it a hospital system, physician clinic system, and the insurance carriers. And that's what's going on right now. We hope that it gets resolved. We are pushing on behalf of your broker advisor, asking them to look at it, look at that. I've also talked with Gary Plummer, the head of the chamber, to give you a little insight. There's about a hundred and thirty businesses in Jefferson City area that are insured with Anthem, from small employers that are fully insured to larger employers like the city. And as another reference, the state of Missouri also uses Anthem. So you can imagine the number of covered lives under the state of Missouri's plan. So definitely a lot of pressure for those two entities to come together to work that out. But it's nothing we can directly affect, but I appreciate the question. I was going to address that. It didn't come up. And there has been letters sent out to members who do go to JCMG. I've seen copies of those letters from JCMG to anyone who, in their records, is covered with Anthem. Anthem has also sent letters out to members who they see in their system that are using JCMG. So the letters are out there advising them of that. We're just hopeful that there'll be a resolution and we won't have this issue where they're not in network provider. One other note, getting a little more detailed. They, if someone's under certain types of treatment going on, I'll just use oncology, cancer as an example. There is, under a law that was passed, a period of time where they can still utilize that current provider. But that is a process that that member goes through to get that approval. So it's nothing we want to see because it is very disruptive. And we are, we'll know, as you all know, we are pushing and we're having our conversations with those appropriate leadership teams, if you will. So did that answer your question? Thank you.
Councilman Wright?
Yes, with regard to Gerber Nationwide, previous discussions, when you came here, we talked about high claims or high-cost claims being lasered out. Reinsure, will they have the ability to laser out? And if so, what are the particulars on that?
Great, great question. There's a current laser, I think, as the council is aware. That laser would continue. It's currently under a current policy. They're matching that current laser, if you will. But in their contract, just like the current contract with Sun Life, there is no new lasers allowed at renewal. And there's also a rate cap, the maximum that they can go up in rates for your specific reinsurance premium. So they're matching what we have in force now, which is a no-new-laser contract. So great question.
Other questions? Councilman Spencer?
Just echo Councilwoman Hensley's concern with the contract negotiations with JCMG. I just want to stress that, the importance of hopefully that there could come to some resolution. We have so many employees that rely on JCMG services. And to then now look at only a sole provider, possibly capital region or St. Mary's, really limits the specialist type of treatments, whether that's colonoscopies or those kinds of issues. So this is a really major issue for a lot of our employees and I'm really stressing that. And I know you're doing the best you can.
Right.
But if there's something, and I know our mayor is engaged with the issue, and I really appreciate that as well. But if there's something that, you know, the council could, you know, send a letter of, you know, pleading that they can resolve this, I'm sure all ten of us would sign it up.
Very much appreciated. I think, yeah, anything from membership leadership to both JCMG, Anthem. I mean, I think they're hearing loud and clear from the constituents that this isn't going to affect a lot of people in central Missouri. And that's the last thing anyone wants in the middle of dealing with their healthcare. So again, we have seen this happen in the past with different carriers, different providers. All of the providers have different contracts with these carriers that come up at different periods, whether it's a one-year contract or three-year contract. So we've seen it happen. Most of the time that gets resolved, we are pushing and doing everything we can. But ultimately, it's their choice to get this worked out. There's going to be disruption on both sides of their fence, so to speak, if it doesn't. But most importantly, it's going to affect the membership. So point well taken. Thank you both.
I know JCMG has hired a lobbying firm, Gamble Flamar, to help them with those negotiations. Hopefully that will assist. Other comments? All right, you've got two, Revolution, is there action on Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight?
I move to approve.
We have a motion? And a second? Any other discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Weisman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
No.
Spencer?
No.
Spicer?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it takes us to item fifteen, Presentations from the Gallery. We have five people that have signed up.
Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Daniels?
Maybe you left. Mary Williams-Coley?
Hi. My name is Mary Williams-Coley. I'm from the Jefferson City Community Center. I'm Don'tland. I come to you on September the eighth. It was a letter written to the community center. It was actually like you were trying to take the community center at that time. And it was, it was a deal, an easement and a property. And the reason I'm bringing this to you, and during that same time on the, during the fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, you redid the roads and the sidewalks down there by doing that, doing the sewage and everything when that storm came through. It messed up the community center. It flooded through there. At that time, you took that away. You tried to take that. The thing is, and the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is that with the young lady from, Ms. Donna, you just, I'm just so, I'm just so confused right now. Let me get myself back together because it made me upset in the beginning. You guys voted and you voted, and I really haven't been in a forum like this. You had voted and you voted that in already for Mr. Thomas, Pat Thomas, to move in. And usually during this process, it's that they served three years and if they are willing to stay on, that they should be able to stay on. But you voted. This young man, he come to, he gave you money for your campaign. He gave you money for your campaign. Is it that he just, you just gave him a seat and not allow? It's like it's a slap in the black community face because you have, you're not giving her another chance to come in to work. You taking, it's like you just coming in and you just ripping it apart. We need, that our community need to be able to see that these people are, we got colors that's here and willing to work and her. work. And her, you know, she'd have been to college, she did all of these things. She got this under her belt, and, and then you're gonna come and just rip it away? You're gonna, you're gonna just rip it away because somebody donated to your campaign?
That's not my campaign.
Whichever one, Spencer, whoever, and you, whoever, you know, you know who I'm talking to. But the, the point is that, you know, our community center, and, and we trying to stand up to build our community, and, and let our, not only the black children, but our low-income children to, because when they speak of you, they got a bad taste in their mouth. I go door-to-door and ask, you know, they have no trust in you, you know? I want them to be able to see that we have a diversity between everything, that, hey, this time that we still got this lady, she still voted in, instead of you ripping her out in front of everybody. We need, we need our people to see that you are standing and you have our back. That, that our children could be able to see the diversity and, and the proper representation in our area. And you're not showing that. You're not showing it. And it just, I, I mean, maybe because I'm kind of upset right now, because I had heard you guys voted, and you voted before you gave anybody a chance to say anything. And, and it really keep me off, because it's like, okay, young man, I just brought him a seat, you know? And, and maybe I'm not getting my point across, but I hope I have. You know, and it's just ridiculous. It's ridiculous, you know? We still is, without, you know, you're, you're not contributing to our community. You haven't even came and addressed, or want to address that, that you are take, take responsibility for messing up that whole side of our community, where you came in and built that, well, yeah, it benefited a lot of people. But during that process, you to toe up our community, where we're trying to build, and, and try to let, let our, our community see that, that, you know, that they got resources. So I say, I want, I, I don't want you to be able to vote, Mayor. I'm sorry. I don't want you to be able to vote on him. I don't want him to be able to vote on him. I, I, and I say, for the rest of you guys to vote no, to vote no on it. I'm talking about Mr. Thomas for the park and recreation. That's who I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about. You guys voted that in, in the, in the beginning, and you had already voted, and I don't think that you guys, you two guys, should even be able to vote on that. I really don't. And-
I have to ask you to go ahead and wrap up?
Well, that's it. That, that it, that's it. That's it.
Thank you. David Taylor?
I'll try to remind folks. We've got the time set, so.
Yeah, I know you got the-
Thanks for being here. If you'd just introduce yourself.
My name is David Taylor. I got pulled over and racially profiled by five white sheriffs under the color of law. Me and my three-year-old daughter, they made us walk home. They had assault rifles out, five sheriffs. I came to this governing body, asking for help, asking for equal protections, asking for equal representation, asking for equal funding, equal anything from you guys. Y'all sit up here talking about trees and giving people jobs and stuff. None of that stuff matter. Y'all ain't saying nothing about the people. This is the most boring the city council meeting. Every time I watch our council meetings, it's only about trees and trash and giving people jobs. And over there on, on Capitol is a nuisance. There's a tree. One of the ward said that. No, a nuisance is, is white supremacy. A nuisance is white seniority. And just for educational purposes, 1956, the White Citizens' Council was there formed to oppress socially and economically African Americans. Y'all have not represented us in no form or fashion. Y'all don't even represent nobody, no people. Y'all are not real public officials. Y'all are not helping nobody. Y'all in here passing laws about trees and hiding money. That stuff she said about that money and funding and substitute, that don't even make sense. That sound like some embezzlement type of stuff. It sound like a scheme. I don't trust you guys. And you, and the mayor told me that it was nothing he could do about it. The public officials, the mayor of our town said there's nothing he could do about it. My three-year-old daughter is scared of the police. They made us walk home, five white sheriffs. I asked you guys for resolution, begged you guys to help look into it. The mayor said it's nothing he can do. But you, you guys, and you want to give money for, for, for the, um, for the, for the grave site over there to the lady with the grave site, going to visit dead people, but y'all didn't get, but y'all voted no against public library improvements? I was in the library trying to fax a paper today, and they told me that our equipment is outdated. And I said, why is the equipment outdated? The, um, city? They said the city, everybody, whatever y'all say, no, 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 no. You just follow whatever, whatever the other person say. Nobody speaks up with their own right mind. This is not equal representation for African Americans. And like that lady said, and like she just said, y'all taking our spots. You take everything, he want to come in and, and chop trees and tape highways and sideways. Them are our streets. Them are African-American communities that y'all are taking away from, and y'all ain't put nothing into it. Never. Y'all never help us with nothing. Only thing y'all do is every week, every two weeks, pass bills, and for trees and stuff, and trash and trucks. That's all I hear about every week. I watch every, I watch every one. And you guys never do say nothing about the people. What about the homeless people? You guys don't have a heart? What would you do to help them? You can't encounter with them. You don't go outside and encounter with them. You don't come outside and speak to people like me. When you see me at the grocery store, you walk to the other side of the grocery store. And I'm just in there buying food for my three-year-old daughter, who y'all deprived our rights of. I ask y'all for justice. Adopt resolution in it, please. Adopt a resolution in justice and peace for all minorities. So we gonna have to be subject to this. Adopt that for me. Help me with a resolution. And my three-year-old daughter, who scared of the police. And all y'all sit up here like y'all superior and higher. Oh, you don't have to answer to the public? You guys are work for us. You're public officials. But you guys haven't done nothing for the city of Jefferson City. And the mayor told me it was nothing he can do? Why would the mayor tell me this? Because they don't care. I got my, my rights deprived for me at the Human Rights Commission. They wouldn't let me file a complaint after I called and talked to the mayor's office. The lady, secretary lady said, please go down there, sir. I don't want you calling no more. Please go make your complaint. I went down there. The man found out I was talking about the sheriffs and, and refused to take my complaint. Went to the news trivia and showed them my complaint. Public interest. African Americans are getting treated wrong in Jefferson City, and y'all sweeping under the rug because everybody white. The civil rights unit is white, everybody white. Mayor, give black people some jobs, like she just said, instead of taking stuff from us. Instead of ta, give me and my daughter a resolution. Somebody say, oh, five white sheriffs, assault rifles out? You know what they do to, you know what sheriffs do to African Americans? They kill us with assault rifles out in the open there. And my three-year-old daughter has to go through this. Who feels my pain? Nobody, because nobody's up here black. You don't care. You going home to your nice house, to your family, and everyone, your daughter's safe. If I seen somebody disrespecting you and your daughter, I would say something about it. I would say something about it. Find resol, adopt resolution for me and my daughter, Ms. Emily. Adopt resolution, Mr. Mayor, whichever one of y'all is. Because you don't, you don't care about the public. Every week, y'all meetings are about trees and giving people money, and hiding money, embezzling money, and conflict of interest. Y'all not putting no money in the community. Y'all not helping nobody. No bills are passed to help people, affordable housing, public, ain't no speed bumps in, in public housing. Ain't no speed bumps in that neighborhood, but there's a lot of holes out there that need to be fixed. See, that's the type of stuff I'm talking about. Homeless people who need coats and help from our elected officials. And like she said, y'all just sit here and vote on whatever y'all think is clever, with nobody else's interest in mind, with no public interest in mind. Yeah, I vote, I vote. You going home with your daughter, she's okay. She's fine. My daughter is scared of the police. Police, man. They made us walk. They kept us in the car for an hour in the hot sun, five sheriffs, under the color of law, with assault rifles out. And I, I begged this governing body. I called everybody. I begged them, please help me. Show me some equal protection. Everywhere I went, everybody's white. So who's gonna feel my pain? Who's gonna feel that lady's pain? Yeah, you just throw her off. Yeah, go sit down. Your time's up, ma'am. No, y'all gonna start doing something because the Department of Justice, I filed my complaint with the Department of Justice. And everything, every paperwork that I ever submitted to you guys, is they got it too. They got it too. Because we're gonna get some equal representation in Jefferson City, and y'all can kick me off. But I asked the mayor, I begged him. I said, please find me resolution. Please give me peace. Please give me justice. Somebody come say, David, I'm sorry. Man, I hate your daughter had to go through that. Nobody should have to go through that. I'm sorry. Whatever, whatever the case be, nothing. Y'all throwing stuff under the rug. Throwing stuff under, did the mayor tell y'all that? Five sheriffs under the color of law, assault rifle. I got it on record, everything on record. I record public officials from now on. Because y'all work for us, but y'all really ain't helping us. Y'all got all this money and doing all this stuff, giving people contracts for all this money. Y'all ain't helping nobody. Go put some speed bumps out there. Go get, fix them potholes out there by Family Dollar. Go help some of them, some of them, um, nonprofit organizations who giving away Pampers and food to the homeless. Adopt a resolution for me. Somebody feel my pain. Me and my three-year-old daughter. Because I'm by myself. But you know what? I told everybody in the world. I called everybody on y'all. I called everybody. Y'all don't want to represent us right, and y'all gonna kick me to the curb. And my three-year-old daughter, who is racially profiled by five sheriffs under the color of law, we know what white sheriffs do to black people. I know y'all want me to get out, but y'all adopt resolution for me. Adopt resolution for that lady and, and, and Jefferson City Community Center, the only center we got that y'all ain't helping. But y'all finna try to, you finna try to take that down, put a sidewalk right there, and, yeah, talk about money and embezzle. Hey, there's no equal representation in here. This is unjustified. So if y'all feel the same way, if y'all feel like they should treat African Americans like this, after I begged y'all on several occasions, I don't know if the mayor handed it to y'all, I don't know if Ms. Emily handed it to y'all, but y'all probably don't care. Y'all worried about trash, trees, and giving people large amounts of contracts, but not putting nothing in the city of Jefferson City. But Department of Justice is on it. And I'm, everything I see, I'm gonna, I promise you, everything I'm gonna see, adopt some justice for me. Adopt that for me. Adopt a resolution for me, Ms. Emily, Mr. Mayor, whoever, the councilmen, elected officials. Adopt a resolution for me and my three-year-old daughter, who don't feel safe, because we got 100% white sheriffs patrolling our neighborhood. That's 60% African-American. So I'm scared to leave my house now. Y'all don't care, because y'all go home to y'all family. Y'all doing good. You know what? But the FOIA request, all, I can get any information. I know that's backed up too. FOIA request, it show you how good y'all living. Y'all don't care about the people. Y'all ain't putting nothing in the neighborhoods of the people. Y'all worried about trees, trash, and, and big, and big contracts for white people. Am I looking, I need a resolution. If anybody in here is a real human being, a real human being that got kids, you, you would desire a resolution. I desire a resolution.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming in. Mr. Bo.
Don Boz.
Hard to follow. I'm trying to be incognito tonight. First of all, one comment. I'm sitting pretty far back. It's really hard to hear most of you. You just speak so soft. I don't know if you need microphone. And I actually kind of asked a number of people in the gallery behind me, and they couldn't hear you either. Not, not always, but I can definitely hear the eyes and the nose real distinctly, because y'all speak up there. This is the yard waste thing. And I, I think I understood what was voted on tonight. I guess my question is, is there anything in place that's gonna be available November 1st?
So I think what was passed tonight would be, make service available over the weekend starting November 1st. So it'd be November 6th and 7th, I think, is the-
Okay. I, I know you, they talked about, I, I just wanted to clarify that. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Thanks.
Take a poll in the gallery, see if they all hear you.
Thanks for the feedback. We appreciate that, too. Last one I see is Amy Rogers. If you would just identify yourself. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. My name's Amy Rogers. I live over on the West End. I won't comment all of the, was, I know we're running short of time. But I will say that I concur with Councilman Lester's comments about lack of trust. And there were five councilmen, well, five on the city council, who accepted PAC money, or money from Ms. Thomas. And this, to me, is something that seems like it, let me find where I had that. Basically, the, the leadership is bought and paid for by, in, buying our city. So that way, when you have a state entity, or a lobbyist, that is donating money to a city member, it is no longer the voice of the, the residents of the city. It is the voice of that PAC or that lobbyist. And that is, to me, not acceptable. For any of you to do that is unacceptable. I will keep my comments brief, and I will talk with you more later, so you can get this over with, because I know it's been a long night. But those of you, you know who you are. I'm very sad about this. Makes me have a very severe lack of trust in those that did. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. All right. That's all we had signed up. It takes us to item 16, council staff discussion and presentation.
I just need to correct myself. I said, I said November 6th and 7th. November 4th and 5th will be the first weekend for yard wasters.
All right. New business. Item 17A. Councilman Lester.
So, the mayor, the mayor decided Lincoln University student participation in our meetings. And I understand that he said he's arranged that Lincoln University mostly provide quarterly updates. But, and I agree that that would be, that would be good to do, for updates to occur. However, I don't understand why that would preclude substitute for Lincoln University representation and them doing periodic updates about ongoing campus activities. I expect those presentations from the students and, and mostly be very different, with very little information to overlap, really. However, I think student representation, maybe it should be, have it, like, first monthly, monthly meetings, give their presentations. So I would move that we invite to appoint, if we can, appoint a student representative to attend our first monthly Monday meetings, we give them sessions, to give updates on that.
We've got a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Where do we stop? We have other schools in this town. So we're gonna have everyone's, every school, past the high schools, come in, come to college, William Woods, whatever satellites we have. We have a number of satellite schools here. I think it'd just take it up a lot of time. We have enough time here. If there's something very pressing, big activity, yes, come in. I think Dr. Mosley is more than capable of keeping us apprised what's going on at Lincoln University. Got a lot of stuff to do. Not listen to people give updates where we can definitely read it in the school or the school calendar. If it's the only school in town, I'd understand. But if we're gonna have one, we're gonna have to do all of them. Then we have to have the high schools. This isn't a civic school. It's any business. That's my feeling.
It's any business, that's my feeling.
Councilman Miller.
So this is a symbolic thing and I think that I, that our community needs this. I was on council, obviously, when we had a student representative from Lincoln come, but I came to all those meetings, I prepared for the job and I really appreciated what the student member had to say and I appreciate how symbolic that was and that that's our historical college and, or university in our community. And so I'm certainly glad this was, this was brought to my attention in an Eastside Business meeting, or Eastside Business Association meeting and there were gasps in the room, like, how did this happen? Why? And so I, I'm honored to second that motion.
Councilman Lester.
Respond to Councilman Deacon's remarks that we have one university here, Lincoln University, our university, we can be proud of that. Do what we can to promote the university and the activities on the university. Having students come here, see what's in government's doing and what's happening out, but also present what activities are going on, speak that.
Councilman Spencer.
There, there's nothing that precludes Lincoln student to come to address this body at any, anytime, we have an open door policy, so I support that effort anytime. Thank you.
I'd just say, I'm sure you recognize that that's distinctly different from having the invitation to be formally represented and participate in some of our meetings.
There's not much substance to that position in the past that, that's been done, so.
No, it's, 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 it's a lot symbolic, I agree with that, but that's your point.
Other comments? You motion from, you do a roll call vote.
Wright.
Aye.
Pollers.
Aye.
Deacon.
No.
Tinsley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz.
No.
Spencer.
No.
Spicer.
No.
Wiseman, no. We have a tie, five ayes, five noes.
Any other new business? Spenden.
Sorry, I, I would just, you know, tonight was kinda unprecedented with the vicious of personal attacks on one of our volunteer newly appointed members of the Parks Commission. And I just would like to say thank you, Mrs. Thomas, for your service. My only basis of supporting you was on how you have handled this public scrutiny and your perseverance. You not only have my support for my respect as well. I'm fortunate to not have to make my, made my decision solely on that basis, but also on my personal friendship with you and your family and the character and leadership that you would be bringing to serve in our community. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas, for your, your service today.
I will go back to seventeen A. I usually don't talk from the podium, but I'm gonna give you a little context on the, the issue with the session point with, with Lincoln. I spent a lot of time in council and I find it very frustrating that there are people in this community trying to drive a wedge between the city and our university. I have spent every event that I go to talking about six strategic partners that move this city forward and Lincoln is usually the first one out of my mouth. We looked at how we restructure this, this meeting to make it productive for everybody and for people to take that and try to drive a wedge between the university. I had a long discussion with Dr. Mosley, who has served on two task forces, I invited him to because we appreciate, love and support our university. I'm an act, when I can be, I'm a member of their, their Athletic Booster Club, I try to go to games when I can. Everybody on this council understands the importance of that university to this community and it is so exciting, exciting to have a president that understands the importance of the relationship not only to City Hall, but with the Capitol. And we have done a lot. There are exciting things going on there. We as a council have invested a half million dollars in their new nursing school, which they're in under design phases to start construction. They've got a dormitory that's gonna be taken offline, which complicates housing in that area, which complicates a very important issue. And my concern was we need to have representation at council to address those issues. It was not meant as a wedge with students, as Councilman Spencer indicated. They are always welcome at this meeting and we will probably invite them as key things, homecoming and other activities come up. But for people to use this and try to drive a wedge between something that we have worked as eleven of us, very hard to, very diligently to build that relationship between the university and now that we have a president that gets it, I think it is unfair to him, I'll take the responsibility for it. I talked to Dr. Mosley and we agreed, this was implemented in the last administration and was not done in the administration before that. So it's not something historical that we've always done. It is not in our code or charter, it was a courtesy and we're still extending that courtesy, it's just not on the agenda. So I appreciate comments on both sides. I've said since I took over six months ago, we will have the difficult conversations here, I'm willing to talk about everything, but I'm trying to move this city forward and do some things different. We have been stagnant as a city for a decade, over a decade. We're trying to do business different. We have a new council, we're looking at things differently and I think it's unfortunate we're using an issue to drive a wedge between a very important partner to the city. Councilman Schwartz.
I would, I would love to ask Councilman Neely, but apparently he left. Was anybody else at the Eastside Business Association meeting?
Sure I was.
So can I ask, can I inquire? Who, who brought that up in front of the Eastside Business Committee?
I believe, uh, Mr. Turgeon brought it up, I believe so.
So the former mayor is the one trying to drive this wedge, is what you're doing?
I would not characterize.
I'm, I'm done.
And I take offense.
I'm done. I'm done.
All right, it takes us to item eighteen, unfinished business. I don't think we have any. Item nineteen.
Second.
All fair.